Alright, I'll call this meeting of New Hanover County Board of Education Order. Would ask if everybody would please stand for the invocation, pledge allegiance, and singing of the national anthem.
All in heart, all attention, oh word, march! All in heart, oh, left turn, march! All in heart, oh, breathe and others.
Okay, let's pray. Gracious God, grant her of all wisdom, guide us tonight as we seek decisions for our school system. May our deliberations be civil and informative. We pray for our leaders, and ask a special blessing for those who served in the military service, whether here or abroad. Grant them safety in their service. This we ask in your holy name, amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which is founded, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh say can you see by the dawn's early light, what so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose bright lights and bright stars through the perilous fight, for the broad hearts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh say does that star-spangled banner yet wave for the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Aye, sir, march! All in heart, oh, oh word, march! All in heart, oh, oh word, march! Ready, march, all in heart, fall out!
Aye, sir.
Everybody may be seated.
Hello, I'm Logan Campbell, and I'm in fifth grade.
Hello, I'm Olivia Mallard, and I'm in fifth grade.
Hello, I'm Sarah Pearson, and I'm in fifth grade.
Hello, I'm Sarah Johnson, and I'm in fifth grade.
Hello, my name is Valdi Kamek, and I am in fifth grade.
Hello, my name is Brady Savarn, and I'm in fourth grade.
Hello, my name is Blake Edwards, and I'm in the fourth grade.
Hello, my name is Ellie Padrock, and I'm in fourth grade.
Hello, my name is Harper Boeburg, and I'm in fifth grade.
Hello, my name is Jay Forster, and I'm in fifth grade.
Hello, my name is Maxima Juve, and I am in fifth grade.
Hello, my name is Rachel Ward, and I'm in fifth grade.
Hello, my name is Maya Brigman, and I'm in fifth grade.
Hello, my name is Ava Cantrell, and I'm in fifth grade.
Hello, my name is Morgan Matthews, and I'm in fifth grade.
Hello, my name is Sally Brown, and I'm in fourth grade.
Hello, my name is Grace Berry, and I'm in the fifth grade.
Hello, my name is Haley French, and I'm in fifth grade.
Hello, my name is Kate Renish, and I'm in fifth grade.
My name's Taylor Chase, and I'm in eleventh grade.
My name's Anna Downey, I'm in tenth grade.
My name's Madison Tripp, and I'm in ninth grade.
My name's James Downey, I'm in twelfth grade.
And before our choir leaves, let me just simply say, now, who is here from Bradley Creek? If you raise your hand, is anybody here from Bradley Creek?
This is all Parsley.
Oh, excuse me, it says Bradley Creek and Parsley on my thing, so I'm sorry, y'all all from Parsley? Yeah, I got the old one, I'm sorry.
That was last.
Oh, well, what can I say? Alright, um, okay, so everybody's here from Parsley Elementary School. Thank y'all for being here, the principal, Dr. Robin Hamilton, instructor, Robert Avery. Color guard from Eugene Ashley High School, Principal Patrick McCarthy, instructors Chief Thomas Frost and Colonel Mark Schellenbugger. Thanks to all of y'all for participating today. As items, would you call the roll?
Edward B. Higgins.
Here.
Jeanette S. Nichols.
Here.
Janice A. Kavanaugh.
Lisa Isa.
Here.
Donald S. Hayes.
Here.
Bruce Teachell.
Here.
David L. Wortman.
Here. Do you have before you the agenda, are there any additions or deletions?
We do not need a closed session at the end, you can delete that.
Okay, no closed session at the end, otherwise it's as presented.
Correct.
Alright.
May for approval.
Have a motion. Second. Have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
It is approved. Next item on our agenda, approval of the minutes, regular meeting on May the second, and a special meeting on May the ninth. Do I hear a motion that we approve those minutes? So.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion or corrections? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, they are approved. Next item on our agenda is recognition of achievement. I think we have a fairly large group, as I understand.
We do, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, everyone. We are thrilled to have you all here tonight, and we're very excited because our first presentation, our board has expressed an interest in strengthening our community partnerships. So this is our very first update to the board about our community partnerships, and this one is with Montee's Construction through their Camp Shriver Foundation. They've been working with our students at Williston Middle School. So at this time, I would like to invite Ms. Megan Verdy with Camp Shriver to come forward and tell us all about it.
Hey, I'm Megan Verdy, I'm the executive director of the Camp Shriver program. First of all, thank you guys so much for allowing us the chance to come up here and tell you a little bit about our program. This is a very small portion of our program, we have about eighteen to twenty-four kids who are in the program. Our kids start in sixth grade with application process that starts through Williston Middle School. There is a bit of a grueling application process because this program involves a summer trip to Canada over the summer. So the boys get to go to Canada, spend a week each summer up there on an island, no power, no running water, and have an opportunity to, was there a clicker that I?
There's a mouse right there.
Okay, got it. This actually is a picture of us all together on the island. The, John Montee started this program about seven years ago. The idea was that they could have this opportunity to go to camp, then if you make good grades, you could come back each year following. We realized really quickly that with the kids in schools that we choose from, and the areas and neighborhoods that our kids come from, like they're going to need a lot more support than just expecting them to make good grades. So our kids now attend about four to five hours of tutoring a week, every week. And Dante, who is one of my UNCW students, was attending about thirteen hours of tutoring a week to get through his freshman year of college. I don't know if happily so, but he did it and dedicated himself to it. Our application process is through Williston Middle School. I work with Kristen Guthrie there, the guidance counselor, and the teachers are looking for kids who you see in the classroom that you would send to go and run errands, who make good grades, who are motivated to do well in school, and maybe come from neighborhoods that they would need a little bit more support to help them achieve the goals that they have. The application process is thick, they have to get recommendation letters, they already have to be recommended through their teachers, and then once they make it through that application process, they have to go through a pretty grueling interview process with John Montee and myself, boardroom style like this, and in sixth grade, that can be pretty intimidating. Currently, we've also taken on third, we've also taken on third and fourth graders with Gregory, so we've also started partnering with Gregory this year as well. Once our kids graduate from Williston, we've got them all over the place. They are at Hanover, they are at Laney, they are at Hogard, they are at Williston, Gregory, Trask, so they're, we're kind of spread all over. The tutoring process that they have to take is, like I said, four or five hours a week. This is a huge deal for them because the amount of time that they spend with the tutors is what makes the difference for our grades. Like we hold our kids to a higher standard, our kids are above-average students, straight A students, AP course students, four point five, four point six GPA students, two of which are here tonight, who are attending UNCW and UNC Charlotte starting in the fall. It's also a huge part of our budget, so this, this is a big, big fundraising goal for us because our kids spend so much time with our tutors. We pay them well, and they do an incredible job. Their passion for what they're trying to achieve with our kids and their goals for these kids are huge, and so we make it worth our while. This is what a difference it can make. Mikey is, he attends Williston Middle School, and this was Mikey's report card from this year.
Hello, my name is Mikey Carroll, I'm in eighth grade, and I'm fourteen years old. And you can see from my grades that at first it starts off a little rocky, and then once Camp Shriver starts to jump in and help me, and it starts off with a teacher meeting to start to get me to sort of wake up at school, I slowly start to rise up to AV honor roll, and it sort of changes everything once they start to, once they start helping you, because once they, once they provided the teacher meeting, they wanted you to realize that your potential is way higher than what you feel. Because when I first started off, I was struggling to find a reason to care about school. I thought that most of it didn't really matter. But once Camp Shriver came to me, and I had to go through the entire process to get into Camp Shriver, I realized that there's more, there's more to school than just trying to find a way to pass. And once they made me realize that, I started to become way better, way higher as a student and as a leader in myself, and I was, I became way more proud, and I started to rise this year to AR roll. And my end-of-grade test scores was a four in reading, four in math, and a five in science.
Wow.
Alright, so my name is Josh Pickford.
And I'm Josh Bell.
And we have both been in the program for the past six years. And just to even start with the exposure that these kids get, we take lots of trips, we take trips to colleges and around the world, I guess. There has been a trip to Maine and the annual trip to Canada, so if you want.
Our trip to Canada consists of one, one week of fun-filled adventure, where we do fishing, canoeing, hiking, archery, water activities, and many other fun, also many other fun outdoor activities.
These pictures are mainly, by the way, they don't go to Canada in the winter.
Oh, yeah. And then we also took a trip to Maine as well. We went ice fishing, snowmobiling, skiing, and we also did many other fun activities as well, and it was just a great opportunity that was made possible because of the Camp Shriver Foundation.
So again, exposure is key. If you are exposed at a younger age, I feel like you just understand a lot more about the world, and you understand that school is not only something that you have to sit in class and just read a book or pass a test, that you like actually apply things you learn in school outside in like everyday life. So again, like she mentioned earlier, we are starting with third and fourth grade students this year at Gregory, and just to see that growth in the entire program is really amazing to me because when I started, we only got like eighth graders, which we kind of realized was a little too late. We wanted to start a little bit earlier just to make sure like the whole process of actually learning and like, I guess, applying what you learn in school in everyday life was like, I guess, I would say, a lot better ingrained into their mind. And I just think it's really cool to see what this program's become.
But these guys will be camp counselors too, we won our Canada trip this year. We have a lifeguard and both lead counselors. As Dante speaks. Dante's one of our oldest campers, he's a rising junior at UNCW, and as he just kind of tells you his experience, I'm just flipping through pictures of Canada in the background. And I didn't say it before, when we get all of their passports, there is no money or no cost to any parent for anything in this program.
Say it again? Alright, cool. Good afternoon, my name is Dante Moore, and I've been involved in Camp Shriver since 2011, so roughly seven years. I was selected by my eighth grade teacher, Colleen Maddox, and the Camp Shriver Foundation has affected my life in so many ways, such as helping me become like a better individual over time. Taught me how to become a better communicator, becoming a better leader. All the school, all those skills have taught me how to set an example for the younger campers, which are Mikey and the young ones before me, who are after me. Camp Shriver has helped me with my academics through college because it was very hard my freshman year. I kind of realized that, but I was like, yeah, I need some help. So I was in there dedicating myself to do better in school because I started off kind of rocky a little bit, but as I started to like dedicate myself, I started to do like way better. I went from a, what was it, one point five to a two point seven? So, I mean, it was, it was rough, but now it's like, I'm doing very better, very well now, and I'm going to continue to do better. So, I mean, it's amazing that we have like a strong support system at Camp Shriver because like without it, it'd be very tough to do things, and like such as, well, school in general. And just like, it's wonderful that we get like an opportunity to like use these skills that we learned that we do at camp, such as what Josh Bell said, such as canoeing, hiking, fishing, et cetera. I mean, each of these activities, we actually learn something from, like, we learn life skills, and we relate that to the real world, because like these activities, we do all together. So we learn like teamwork, communication skills, and we always like, we want to become, the goal is to become a better leader, and we always focus on leadership. We're very relentless at that. And, uh, final thing, Camp Shriver Foundation, it just, it just isn't a camp. I mean, we're a family, we really are. So I want to give a shout out to John Montee for creating an amazing program, and I'm also thankful for everyone that helped us along the way, so that's all I have to say.
If y'all have any questions, we're happy to answer them, other, yeah?
Yeah, my question is, is it entirely funded by Mr. Montee, or do you do fundraisers?
We fundraise, correct, we fundraise all year long, we, we have, we do grant applications. John's family and him personally make a huge contribution every year to the program, so, mostly fundraised.
And to the students, as you got into this program, some of your friends that weren't in the program, did they give you pressure not to do it, or you have thoughts on it?
Well, I feel like after we went our first year, they got a little jealous at us.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you guys.
I do have a couple of questions, Dante, Josh, and Josh, do you have a career in mind yet, now that you're in, in the university system?
Well, I plan on going into the field of engineering when I graduate, so I'm going to do my first two years at UNCW, and then transfer to NC State.
Go Wolfpack.
I plan on studying pre-health and majoring in pharmaceuticals, and hopefully owning, owning my own pharmacy one day.
Awesome.
Well, what I plan to do is I want to go into the Cameron School of Business at UNCW, and I plan to do operation management or business administration.
Great, great goals.
What is the difference that I see in my kids, especially with my sixth grade students? Of course, they're very excited about going to Canada this summer, but just the confidence that they have picked up both academically and socially. And I could take Mikey for an example, where he would just come in, and I would try to pick his spirits up now. He's up, head up, walking tall, you know, ready to shake my hand, and you can see that confidence in what the camp has done for him, those hours of tutoring. And when you talk to any of my students about the camp, they are very excited. They, they make you excited, they actually glow when they talk about it, when they talk about the tutoring, when they talk about some of the trips that they go on, when they talk about some of the fundraising efforts. And so I can see that difference that they are making, like I said, both academically and socially.
Awesome.
Thank you, Camp Shriver, and what a great first community partnership for us to highlight. Our next recognition this evening is for a very special group of students who were selected this year to serve on the Superintendent Student Advisory Council. These students represented their school, and they met with the superintendent and our board members each month to discuss important topics that they were concerned about, and to provide valuable input, and.
I would value for your calls, Dean, there's an item on the agenda tonight that came out, was added to right plan as a result of one of these meetings. So they make a difference in terms of the impact, and they, we've been doing this now for almost all seven years I've been here, and a lot of the changes we've made have come about from the input that we received in these meetings.
So students, as I call your name, would you please come and stand for a group photo with your school? So first from Ashley High School, we have Gabriela Martinez Hernandez. Brandon Lee. And Colby Stoner. From the Career Readiness Academy at Mosley, we have Jacob Crochet. Demetrius Grady. Right, Demetrius is enlisting in the Navy, okay, that's great. And America Pena Median. From Hager, Sydney Beckwith. Joshua Bell. Josh, you're starring tonight, aren't you? And Dylan Metz. From Isaac Bear Early College High School, Miriam Carbug. Jeroy LeBob. And Emma Moyer. From Laney High School, while we have them. Emma, hey, Emma. Okay, now onto the bucks. Laney High School, Grayson Arthur. Thymo Bloodworth. And Caroline Cahill. Caroline is one of our top golfers in the state. From New Hanover High School, we have Lamont Howard. Esperanza Mendez Altimorano. And Haley Cloche. From Wilmington Early College High School, Rondasha Dugar. Jonathan Ross. And Jacob Rayner. If the families of these student leaders are here, would you please stand so we can congratulate you on your great students? We are very proud of you, and we thank you for your service to New Hanover County schools. Parents, thank you for allowing your students to work with us, thank you. And now we will recognize our Morehead Kane Scholar. Mina Yakabu of New Hanover High School has been awarded the prestigious Morehead Kane Scholarship of the University. The University of North Carolina Chapel Hill. Mina's a member of the Lyceum Academy, where she created the International Club to create opportunities for students and her classmates. She serves as the senior class president, and she's part of the judicial process of the New Hanover Teen Corp. She's captain of the color guard, girls varsity lacrosse. Wait a minute, Mina, don't go. She wants to study African and African-American studies and political science. She has been recognized by the White House as being one of the top students in the United States of America, ladies and gentlemen. Y'all gonna make me cry. That is so wonderful. Next, we will recognize a special young lady who won the PTA. She's a National Reflections Contest winner, and she won the Award of Excellence in Photography for the Intermediate Division of the National PTA. It's Ms. Nadia Kusel of Castle Hain Elementary School. Is Nadia here with us? Hi, Nadia. Nadia received a $200 Young Artist Scholarship, a silver medal and certificate, and she'll be recognized at the National Reflection Celebration at the Paris Hotel in Las Vegas later this month. You go, Nadia. That's so cute. Our next recognition is for students who receive awards at the North Carolina Science and Engineering Fair. As I call your name, would you please come forward? Nathan Kinsey of Ashley High School won first place in biology, and he received a gold medal of excellence for the US Army. Nathan also advanced to the Intel International Science Fair in Los Angeles, where he was awarded a $2,500 grant from the Coalition for Plasma Science, and he has received a full five-year scholarship to Drexel University. Next, we have Giovanni Boudi and Andrea Lamas Nino from Isaac Bear, who both placed second in Senior Physics and Mathematics for their project. There's Andrea. They won the SPIE Optics and Photonics Award for Excellence and qualified for the International Science and Engineering Fair. Next, we recognize Sophie Jones and Veronica Humphrey from Isaac Bear. They received fourth place in Biology. Next, we have Mia Wackel from Noble Middle School. Mia received first place in Physics and Mathematics and was nominated to advance to the Broadcom Masters National Competition in Los Angeles. These are some smart children, y'all. Next, we have Reagan Williams from Roland Rice Middle School. She placed first in Junior Biology. Next, we have Hudson Howke from Anderson Elementary, who received an award exemplary Top Fifteen in the Elementary Division. Another top elementary scientist is Emmy Rose from Bellamy Elementary. And finally, Samin Ban from Parsley. We see the honorable mention in the Elementary Division. Congratulations to all our parents. Our next recognition is a top math competition winner. It goes to Owen Dean from Noble Middle School. Owen placed third overall in the State Math Counts Competition, qualifying him to be a part of four students from North Carolina to repeat, to compete in the National Math Counts Competition in Orlando. This is quite an accomplishment, one of only few students ever to have qualified for this contest from this school district. Owen's parents, Mr. Smith are here, congratulations. Outstanding accomplishment. Next, we want to recognize three students from New Hanover County Schools from the North Carolina Math Fair. When I call your name, would you please come forward? Shufa Tate from Cottington came in third place at the Eastern Regional Math Fair and advanced to the state competition. Stuart Rice, also from Cottington, came in second place. He was second place in the Eastern Region and second place in the state. And Santana Wade from the International School at Gregory came in second place in Eastern Regional and first place in the State Math Fair. Wow, Santana. And our last recognitions for this evening are for our talented New Hanover County Schools Band students. These students were selected to represent our district in the North Carolina Band Masters Association All-State Honors Band. So this is the top band students in the state. As I call your name, please come forward, and please remain standing for a group picture with your school. From Murray Middle School, Sierra Brooks, who plays the clarinet. Jack King, who plays the flute. And Owen Thorndyke, who plays the trumpet. Their band teacher is David Tyson. Can we get a group picture, Mr. Tyson, with your students? Congratulations, Murray. Next, we have Roland Rice Middle School, Branson McKee, who plays the trumpet. And Elijah Van Campco, who plays the trombone. And their band teacher is Mr. Pete Frank. Congratulations, Roland Grace Nice. From Ashley High School, George Mayo III, who plays the trumpet. John Reyna, who plays tuba. These students are led by Mr. Robert Parker, band teacher. From Hager High School, we have Francesca Altonier, who plays clarinet. Riley Hook, who plays mallets. Their band teacher is Mr. Rod Reed. Congratulations, Vikings. And that actually concludes our ceremony.
Next item on our agenda is the call to the audience. I would remind you that each speaker is limited to three minutes. It does not allow for time for dialogue between the board and the community, but if you have something, we will try to get somebody to follow up with you. While the board welcomes residents to share their views, the chairman retains the right to limit discussion on a particular topic when such comments become slanderous or personal in nature. Having said that, I have had one person sign up. Amanda Boomerstein?
Good evening. As most of you know, my name's Amanda Boomerstein, and I have two kids who attend the International School at Gregory. I'm actually not here to talk about that school tonight, so. I'm here to share with you how I feel about the situation at Hager High School, and specifically...
Wait a minute. That's a student situation, we're going to, it's very limited in terms of that conversation.
That's fine. Can I still share how I feel? Or no?
I'm probably deferred to turn that out.
Do you need to see what she's going to say?
Would you like to read it?
I mean, the issue is that, you know, alleged conduct by students is confidential matter, and can't be released without the consent of the student being discussed.
Yeah, yeah.
So, as long as you don't identify a student or make any comments that could be attributed to, or someone could use to identify the student, then it should be okay.
Okay. Would you like to read it first, or?
Just so you know the, sort of the parameters.
Gotcha, okay. So, I read the Port City Daily article entitled, "She Was Sexually Assaulted. She Says What Her School Did, Next Was Worse." And I was sad, I was scared, and I was upset about how the victim, a female high school student, was treated after she reported that she had been sexually assaulted by a fellow student. I know that there's more to the story than what was included in the article, I know that. And I understand that the assault did not occur on school property, I understand that too. Still, I'm left feeling discouraged that the victim was made to suffer more after the incident due to the action or inaction on the part of the administration at the school and the district. For example, when she notified the authorities that she suffered every time she saw or interacted with her assailant, she was asked to change her routine or her route at school in order to avoid having to interact with him. So as the parent of two daughters, I would like to think that the school would do all that it could to protect victims of sexual abuse. After reading the article, I worry that the school and the district administration do not understand the rights that victims have under Title IX. I'm also concerned by the way the victim's family was treated when trying to work with the school to ensure that their daughter had her rights protected. The perceived retaliation that the family received from the school system is disheartening and is a cause for great concern. And again, I only know what I read, so I'm just letting you know how I feel. I'm here to respectfully ask that the school board do all that it can to ensure that all staff involved are held accountable for their actions in this situation. Parents and students alike need to feel that they are safe at school and that they can trust their teachers and administrators at all times, but especially when suffering from the aftermath of a sexual assault. When election time comes around, I know that myself and other parents are paying attention to this fundamental question in the school system and the board's prioritization of our children's safety and well-being, both physically and emotionally. I know that as board members, you're very busy this time of the year, and I appreciate you giving me an opportunity to speak to you this evening, so, thank you. Hope that was okay. Thank you.
Next item on our agenda is administrative personnel, superintendent's evaluation contract, and my name was there beside that. I will say that we have done an evaluation of the superintendent. The evaluation was generally positive, and I have a statement to read with respect to the superintendent. The Board of Education has completed its annual evaluation of Dr. Timothy Markley, superintendent of New Hanover County Schools, and is pleased with the direction our system is taking. The Board appreciates the superintendent's leadership and foresight in this in as we continue to deliver high-quality education to our students in New Hanover County. As evidence, in the increased graduation rate and test scores, the opening of the Career Technical High School, also C-Tech, is one of the many innovative programs offered to enhance our students' learning opportunities. We are confident that Dr. Markley's dedication to New Hanover County Schools will continue to serve as well as we strive to meet the ever-changing needs of our students and the community. Now, with respect to the superintendent's contract, the board has met and has discussed a contract which we have, we need to vote to approve this, Wayne?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I thought so, all right. But just so everyone will know, effective July 1, 2017, the terms of the contract is extended until June 30, 2021. Number two, superintendent's total current annual salary of $200,000 shall be increased as follows. Effective July 1, 2017, $5,000 increase. July 1, 2018, an additional $5,000 increase. July 1, 2019, additional $5,000 increase. July 1, 2020, additional $5,000 increase. If, if I may say, this is the first time the superintendent's salary has been increased in the seven years he has been here, so we feel that he has earned these increases. Superintendent shall neither request nor receive another extension of contract terms when the...
Mr. Higgins, I'm sorry, I believe you're reading from a previous version of the contract. I think that clause was stricken.
I, I got the one that you gave me. I'm sorry. All right, I apologize. Just kind of been my day, all right. In the event the superintendent chooses to leave the employment of the board during the terms of his contract for any reason other than permanent disability or death, he shall pay or costs to be paid to the board an amount as follows. If the superintendent leaves prior to July 1, 2018, the amount to be paid is $100,000. If superintendent leaves between July 1 of 2018, not 1018, to June 30, 2019, the amount to be paid is $75,000. If the superintendent leaves between July 1, 2019, and June 30, 2020, the amount to be paid to the board is $50,000. And if the superintendent leaves between July 1, 2020, and June 30, 2021, the amount to be paid is $25,000. The amount paid is to be considered liquidating damages and not a penalty. The parties agree that the amount to be paid is a reasonable estimate of the monetary damages to be suffered by the board in the event of the superintendent's early termination of the contract. All right, and the board has seen the remainder of the contract. Do I hear a motion that we accept the contract as presented? Have a motion and a second? Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? It is approved. Next item on the agenda, administrative recommendations, Appendix A, Dr. Markley.
Let me take a moment of personal privilege and say thank you to the board. It has been a pleasure to be here for seven years. As you can see with this contract, I will be here four more years. So, I'd like to thank my wife who's here tonight. So, she's happy because she's a Wilmington native, so she gets to, she knows she's staying here, the confidence. But this doesn't happen without a lot of the folks in this room. This district is blessed with some amazing talent, from senior staff to the principals who are here and the other folks who work in central office. And I appreciate the direction that the board has given over those seven years. It has been a pleasure to be here, and I look forward to the next four. Thank you. Super, now we have some administrative recommendations. First one is for the position of the Director of Student Support Services. Usually you say it's a pleasure to recommend this person. Actually, it is a pleasure to recommend this person, but she is one that'll be hard to, hard to replace. Ms. Kristen Jackson, who's currently serving as the principal at Blair, previously served and was the founding principal at Lake Forest Academy, Sunset Park, is an AP at Blunt and Snipes, and a teacher at Winter Park. She has a bachelor's in elementary ed and a master's degree in school administration, both from UNCW. So it is my pleasure to recommend Kristen Jackson for the Director of Student Support Services.
Do I hear a motion that we approve this recommendation?
Still moved.
Second. I have a motion and a second? Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? It is approved.
Ms. Jackson has some folks with her today.
Hi, this is my uncle Chris, and this is my son Tyson, who has just arrived waiting in the middle school. the middle of school.
Our second recommendation is to the Howe Pre-K Center. I think the happiest person will be Ms. Smiles, so she can go back to being just the Director of Early Childhood. She's been filling a dual role the last several months, and I appreciate her doing that. Ms. Sturdivant currently serves as Assistant Principal at Burgoyne Elementary, previously served as an instructional leader with Rocky Point School, data support specialist with Fulton County Schools, a teacher at Fulton County Schools, and Montgomery Public Schools, Fayette County Schools, and the Charlotte Mecklenburg Schools. Her contract will be effective until June 30, 2019. She has a bachelor's degree in human development and preschool education from UNCG, a master's degree in elementary ed from NCANT, and a certification in leadership from West Georgia University. My pleasure to welcome Ms. Deion Sturdivant, and recommend her for our Pre-K Center Principal.
You've heard the recommendation. Do I hear a motion to approve it?
So moved.
Second? Have a motion and a second? Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? It is approved.
Ms. Sturdivant is here. She will stand up and introduce the folks that are with her.
I've got something else to be here. You can see Andy's surf. I'm glad we didn't have to do a part.
Well, our third recommendation is for Finance Accounting Supervisor, Ms. Dawn George, who held that position, except for the promotion in Duplin County, and will sorely be missed, but we think this is a more-than-able replacement. Ms. Karen McCall, previously served as the Assistant Finance Director with the City of Albemarle, and a Senior Accountant with the City of Concord. Additionally, she served as a Controller with G&amp;G Landscape of Charlotte. She has a bachelor's in Business Administration from Catawba College, and Associate in Accounting with Rowan Cabarrus Community College, and is a Certified Public Accountant, and has NC Government Finance Officer Certification, as well as QuickBooks Online Certification. It's my pleasure to recommend Karen McCall.
You've heard the recommendation. Do I hear a motion to accept it?
So moved.
Have a motion and a second? Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? It is approved.
All right. Is Ms. McCall here? Please. Not here?
Unless she went to a good college.
Just for the record, our Chair is also an alumni of Catawba College, which is not in Catawba County.
No, it's not. It's in rural.
Final recommendation is for Interim Assistant Principal. This name will be familiar. Dewey Chris Furr, was retired as the Principal of New Hanover High School, and he will serve there until June 13, 2017. He has served with many capacities with us over the years, so we always welcome back Mr. Furr to serve as the interim Assistant Principal.
Do I hear a motion to accept it?
So moved.
Have a motion and a second? Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? It is approved.
All right. The last set of recommendations are Assistant Principal Contract Renewals. These were, you have the list in front of you. Ms. Chair, do you want to take them as a group, or do you need me to read them individually?
What's the will of the Board?
Take them as a group.
Okay. Take them as a group.
Because we've seen them ahead of time.
All right. I would ask the Board to approve for employment and contract renewals, the Assistant Principals who are listed in the recommendation.
Heard the recommendation. Do I hear a motion to accept?
So moved.
Have a motion and a second? Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. It is approved. All right. Next item. Head Start. Mr. Shell.
We know we have a big agenda tonight, so we're going to be brief. Right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Our first item is your expenditure report, and we have a year in, as you know by now, of April the 30th. We have, out of a $1.958 million budget, we spent all but $22,000. And I'm told that those funds will slide into indirect cost, which was another way of saying that the school system had supported Head Start in the event that it came up close. But, as you might imagine, Ms. Smiles managed it very, very well. Any questions about this expenditure report?
We also, we have, we also, we have 90 days to close out our budget, so you can see the encumbrances as well, just to let you be aware of that, so we get a 90 days.
And we're not allowed to carry anything over, correct?
Correct.
So we have to bend it.
One question.
Ms. Shell, the total budget is just under $2 million, correct?
And those are all federal funds? No local dollars in that, right? Okay. And then the, the second piece was, this is my first year as your liaison on this, but we have a requirement to show the, the support, the non-federal share. So you have a report there, and Ms. Smiles has educated me that we're required to have at least 20% support, and we far exceed that. Would you like to elaborate on any of that?
It really is self-explanatory, but you can see here the items that we're using for non-federal share. In-kind is another reference. Utilities, technology, maintenance, HVAC system to maintain the building. We're required to report only $489,596, but as you can see, because we're embedded with the school system and governed by the school system, we have major support with that. So I think what's key here is to look at the dates of reporting, and to let our Board, our governing Board, know that we are exceeding those recommendations, and we're meeting those needs.
And as you know, that Johnson facility is also used as a shelter when we have hurricanes. So it's a, it's an essential part of this community. And our last item is, Ms. Smiles and Ms. Greer will speak briefly on the report that they got on Head Start. Excellent report.
I would just like to say a big shout-out to our Johnson team. Woohoo! We scored above the national average for our class review, and I know we've been waiting for that. The month of April, we had two review team members come out and assess our teachers, and so we were assessed in three domains, as we've been sharing on a monthly basis. We have classroom organization, emotional support, and instructional support. So, just a hats off to her team for scoring above national average on that. So that's, we've got to understand that this is national data, not state data, but at a national level, that's a big kudos for them. So, that's everything.
Next item on our agenda, information, the Summer Food Service Program. Mr. Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Summer Food Service Program is a federal program that provides meals during the summertime for children 18-years of age and younger. Child Nutrition has been participating in this program for over 30 years now, and this year, they're going to be expanding services to reach more kids. Imar Smith, the Director of Child Nutrition, is here tonight. I'll turn it over to her to share some more information with you.
And I get very excited about this program, so I won't go long, I've been told. But I am excited. As schools are closing down, guess what we're doing? With other departments, we are ready, gearing up for our Summer Food Service Program. So I'm going to quickly tell you a little bit about our Summer Food Service Program, what it's about, how many we fed last year, what we anticipate to feed this following, this coming summer, and just a little, and all the sites that we've got, some new sites. So, just to start off, if you can see the State of North Carolina there, New Hanover County, you see, is in the green. And we are feeding about 21% to 25% of our most, you know, of our students in New Hanover County that are in need. So I very, you know, I'm pleased to say that, if you look at that map, we're doing a great job here in the South, so, south of North Carolina. And then if you look at the next slide, this just tells you a little bit about our Summer Food Service Program. It is a USDA Department, USDA Summer Food Service Program, also known as a Summer Meals Program. It provides kids and teens in low-income areas free meals when student, when school is out. It also, it's federally funded, it's a state-administered program. It provides free and nutritious meals to children 18-years old and younger. There is a stipulation where it, we are allowed to feed children at the age of, over, up to 21-years-old, if they are in our school system, in one of the special ed programs. So we are able to do that. It bridges the gap in nutrition that children may suffer over the summer months, and it also gives kids a place to continue physical and social growth over the summer. I do try to incorporate this Summer Food Service Program with other programs happening in the community, along with, if you notice, I have, I have a lot of churches on board, I have community sites. So we have wonderful programs that are happening, that they do include children from outside the community come in and participate. So that's wonderful. Also, our schools, we have seven schools that were, have, you know, we have the Summer Food Service Program, and they also open up their libraries during that time for students to come in and read. So that's a great connection that we kind of build in the summertime. It also helps families out. Over the summer months, I don't know about you, I have two children, and they can eat, and it does, you know, it's nice to have something available out there for families to come and eat at no cost for the children. It also helps kids return to school ready to take on the new year. So if you look at our projections from last year, we had 23 sites last year, we fed 33,000 meals. We averaged a little over 1,000 meals per day in 30 days. Now this summer, our goal was to, number one, increase sites, also, let's increase the number of days. So this year, we reached out to 20, we have 26 sites. We have, we serve, we're anticipating 44,000 meals, about 1,300 in 34 days. So, I'm, I can't wait for this summer to happen. It's going to be a great summer. Now if you look at the sites here, these are our open sites. We have Alderman, Castle Hain, Wrightsboro, Williston, New Hanover, Forest Hills, Winter Park, Bradley Creek, Bellamy, Douglas Academy, Best Village, Martin Luther King, New Hope Baptist Church, Houston Moore, Hillcrest, Village at Greenfield, Mates Park, Creekwood South, Union Missionary Church, Brinkin Terrace, Warren Temple Church, St. Phillips, Lake Forest Baptist Church, St. Paul's Methodist Church, Royal Palms, and Warriors of Christ. And we're operating this June 26 through August 11 at several of the sites. There are a few sites that are closing, closing down, and we have indicated those dates for the public, for parents to see where our sites are located, the dates, and the tides. And on behalf of Child Nutrition, I just want to thank the school system, thank you, Dr. Markley, thank you, Board, for supporting our program. And there is, there are other sites, you can go to New Hanover County Schools, you can also go to the USDA website, and there's also Hunger Free America. And I actually called the phone number, and I was able to get lots of sites in New Hanover County, so it's very accessible to parents. So thank you so much, and if you have any questions, I can, yes, sir.
Well, I didn't, have we eliminated, didn't we have some sites in the southern end of the county?
We do. We still have them. We have St. Paul's on Carolina Beach.
Oh, okay.
And then we also opened up Bellamy Elementary School this year.
And Royal Palms.
Yeah, Royal Palms is-
And Royal Palms.
Muckey Junction, that's not, you know, lots, it's a lot south of Muckey Junction.
Yeah. So we're expanding. We have Castle Hain up in the north, and there's Wrightsboro.
Is, is there a reason we don't have Carolina Beach?
That, I had to use a mapper, and I know for several years, we've talked about this mapper, and Carolina Beach School does not qualify that area, but we, what, this church did qualify.
That's interesting.
It's interesting, isn't it? So I was able to qualify the church.
Well, all right, but between St. Paul's at Carolina Beach and Bellamy, we have no other sites, I mean, I'm thinking of, I'm trying to think of the church that's about halfway down, before you get to the Catholic Church. It's a, I think it's St. Mark's AME, or something like that.
And every summer, we take phone calls, and if I can't fit them in this summer, I do look at for next summer, and then I'll use the mapper to see if their sites will qualify. So that's a great idea.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll look at that church. Yes, Mr. Shell?
I was trying to think, I lost my train of thought here. Yeah, is this all federal funds?
It's all federal funds. Yes, sir.
That was it.
Yes. So, thank you so much for having me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next item on the agenda is the Superintendent's Report, Ad-Hoc Committee, Appendix J, Dr. Markley.
Yeah, I'd like the Board to approve bringing back one ad hoc committee for a specific purpose, and the creation of a second committee. The first committee I'd like to bring back is the Compensation Review Committee. We used this committee several years ago to look at our pay structures, and it was instrumental in bringing back, making some changes. I'd like to come back and look now at our supplement structure, and so I would ask that the Board approve reinstating that ad hoc committee. And there was one person, one member who was on it who was no longer here, I think Ms. Cobble was on that committee, so we'd need a replacement for Ms. Cobble on that committee.
The Compensation Review?
Yeah.
No, I thought that was Bruce and Ed and I.
Okay.
According to the minutes, it wasn't Mrs. Cobble.
Okay, so it was just you three, and so-
If you'd like to put it back together.
Please.
Okay.
The second one, we, we know about the class size legislation. There was, the fix this year is a temporary fix, so there are going to be a lot of implications in terms of that class size issue. So I'd like to recommend that we put together an ad hoc committee on class size compliance. I'd like Board members, two Board members, principals, teachers, as well as some central office folks who are impacted by this, to, to help us plan that, for that. And then I also had a great suggestion from Mr. Wortman, that we use this also to look at our long-range planning in terms of future needs as well. So once we talk about class size compliance, this may morph into a long-range planning grade.
You want to see if anybody wants to volunteer now?
Committee appointments of the Boards, Board Chairs.
All right. We already have, then we already have a committee for the compensation already, so. Anybody would like to volunteer to be on this class size compliance committee?
I can certainly do it.
Okay, Mr. Wortman?
I'll go.
Okay, Ms. Ace, so you've got your committee.
All right. Thank you.
Yes.
Mr. Anderson will serve as the Chair of that committee.
I would point out that, you know, other members of the Board are free to attend these meetings, if they so choose.
Okay. Next is Legion Stadium Revenue Scoreboard. If you remember when we approved, I think it was about $26,000 to build the, to contribute to the Legion Scoreboard. The idea was that we would recoup the cost through the advertising sales. The flyer in that methodology was that it was the, those ads are done by the Booster Club, so there's no incentive for a Booster Club to go sell ads. At this point, the, we've expended the money, it's paid for, we've seen no revenue for a year. I would like to see somebody get benefit from the scoreboard, so I would recommend that we remove that obligation to repay us, and just simply allow that the Booster Club, or if another school is using that field for an event, to sell ads on that scoreboard and keep the revenue.
Okay.
Makes sense.
I think we could put that on for new business and vote on it.
All right. So if that's okay with the Board, we can have that as a new business item?
But you like.
All right.
Anything else? Aye. Consensus items. Personnel, Dr. Wellman.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Request the Board to approve the Personnel Matters as presented.
Do I hear a motion to accept the recommendations?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second? Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? They are approved. Budget Amendments, Appendix J, Mary Hazel Small.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I request the Board's approval of the amendments as presented.
Anybody have any, oh, let me hear a motion then. Do I have a motion to accept the recommendation?
So moved.
Have a motion, do I hear a second? Have a second? Have a motion? Do I hear a second? Have a second. Any discussion? No questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? It is approved. Change of school assignments, Appendix K, Dr. Holliday.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, request that you release these students as listed to the neighboring county where it says preference. Most of these students are either, parents are either employed by the Brun, by the, excuse me, by the neighboring county school district or in that neighboring county.
Okay. You've heard the recommendation? Do I hear a motion to accept it and approve it?
So moved. Second.
I got a motion and a second. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? It is approved. Next item, old business, policies for second reading and approval. Policy 1100 missions, vision, goal. Policy 1660, student scholarship for future teachers. And policy 9,000, school-community relations, Appendix L, Series 1,000, and Appendix L, Series 9,000. Ms. Nevers.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Unless we have any questions, I move for approval.
I hear a motion for approval. Do I hear a second? I have a second. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? It is approved.
I would ask Mrs. Quattlebaum, however, once school is out, because I think the principals have more on their plate right now than they really need, remind all the principals to update their website, because some of them have the original mission and not this one. So, we'll make sure that they're all updated. Thank you.
Will do.
Thank you.
All right. I have been asked to take a break before we begin the new business. So, we will take a break and be back soon.